All right then, I believe we have everyone here. It is now seven twenty-two and I will call the committee of the whole meeting to order. This is Monday, May the third, two thousand and twenty-one. We have no closed session for today's meeting and again apologies for those that have been waiting for us. We started late because of our previous meeting. With the call to order, next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We have the agenda before us. Are there any noted changes to the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as written? And Deputy Mayor, thank you. Second by Councilor Parks, any comment? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Is there any disclosure pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we can move right into business. First up, we have item four point one, the final draft of the renewable energy fund grant policy. We have the policy before us. Does staff have anything to add to this report at this time? Stipe?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I would note that Ms. Stipe, Mr. Silver, Ms. Chapman, they're all in attendance. If we have questions as we go through this. We have the policy before us or the draft policy before us. With recommendations, council, I'll start with questions. And again, this is committee of the hall. We are open to further discussion than we do under normal full council rules. And so anyone who wishes to make a statement or a comment with regard to this policy at this time? I'm seeing none. Does anyone wish to make a motion? I'll go to Councilor Biderick.
I have previously, actually already sent this to the clerk, Ms. Chapman. I have a motion that, and there's nine parts here, so bear with me for a moment, please. That twenty-five percent and only twenty-five percent of the funds from the wind electric project be allocated to Amherst Island over the twenty-year period of the vibrancy contract. Number two, that the current vibrancy committee be dissolved. Number three, that two new committees be formed. First, the committee with Councilor Townend and six Amherst Island residents. And the second, two members of council to be named as well as five residents, varying geographical residences within wards two and three, both committees, the members to be approved by council. Number four, that moving forward, that all funds granted from the community grant be moved from, be removed and moved into the vibrancy account fund, so they would be paid for from the vibrancy accounts geographically pertaining to where the, the, the funds are going to be spent. Number five, the stipulation that fifty percent of funding of a project not be required for an application. Number six, that twenty-five percent of funds from both vibrancy contracts be allocated to a reserve fund. Number seven, that all applications come to council regardless of the committee's recommendations. Number eight, that each committee make their own parameters regarding the rules for applications. So be approved by council. And number nine, that staff be able to have recommendations on projects for applications as well. And if there's any, if I get a second or I can answer any questions.
And to the clerk, go ahead.
I can put, I can share my screen if you like your worship, so people can read it.
And I'm seeing nods from council. I think that would be appreciated. Thank you. We're just seeing black screen at this time, Ms. Chapman. Still seeing black screen.
Your worship, I could email it to everyone if they wanted right now as well.
And I appreciate that. My preference would be that we could share this on screen so the council can get a view of it. If that is technically feasible. These technologies sometimes cause some delays. There we are. I believe we can now see them. Just gonna move my view screen. Hang on one second, guys. Gallery.
Sorry, your worship, I froze there for a minute, so I wasn't able to do anything.
That's okay. Now I can see the members of council and see the, the nine points that are brought before us. And I'll give council a few moments to read over those. And when everyone's ready, I will formally accept the motion and look for a second or. Everyone had a chance to look at it? I see some that are still looking for some time. Counsel, do we need more time? Seeing people taking notes. And I can well imagine that there may be some clarity requested of the mover for the intent of some of these clauses. I will ask that I seek, I will seek a second or before I go to that. So I will formally receive the, the motion. Do I have a second or for the motion at this time? Council Porter, seconds. Thank you very much. At this time, I will go to the mover for comment. You're on mute, Councilor Biderick.
As you all know, I spoke with everyone today. And kind of got an idea on where they were and what it would take to get something moved forward. Due to our last committee, the whole meeting, things weren't moving forward. And from one conversation today, it would have been, I believe, fairly devastating to the whole idea of this if it had have been put back to the committee themselves to make change. So it wouldn't have been fair to them. So try to come up with something and if anyone has any questions, I can give them the rationale and intent behind all of the different points.
Thank you. Second or do you have comment at this time?
I, I do have, but I have some questions first and I'm wondering, can we take the screen sharing off so I can see everybody?
Okay.
That's better. Um, just with the, I just want to clarify a few of these, if you don't mind. So twenty-five percent and only twenty-five percent of the funds from the wind electric be allocated over the twenty-year period of the vibr- okay, that's fairly clear. So when you say the current vibrancy committee be dissolved, that means that the, the draft policy that's before us tonight, that would also be dissolved then. And anything in that would be dissolved and the forming of the two new committees would create their own recommended draft policies? Is that, is that the intent, the idea here?
It is, and, and behind that, it's, there could very well be two different ideas for what each area believes is best suited for them. So it allows the people living in those areas to have and knows what's best for them to be able to move forward with that. And, and, and best suit them so they can get the most out of, out of what this money can do for our whole municipality.
Okay, so when, when, so the point that the fifty percent of the funding of the project, and I presume you're speaking about the requirement in the current draft policy that someone has come up with fifty percent in order to match the, any grant application or grant award. So I'm assuming with, with the dissolving of the committee and the dissolving of the policy in front of us, that we're not even going to, to look at that, that would automatically happen. And then the
Well, well, if, if I may answer that to that, I just, I'd like that included in both of the committees going forward and, and two reasons behind that. One, if it's a smaller project, and I know that was not necessarily included in the original committee's work. A smaller group shouldn't have to come up with any of the money to have a project go forward. And it also pertains to any staff recommendations for projects. The H shouldn't be trying to find the other fifty percent in the tax levy side of things to have a project go forward because that's what this money is, is truly for.
Okay, okay, well, that's good, that's good. And then I presume when you, you say here that all applications come to council regardless. So, so that means that we get to see all applications and all committee recommendations. We just don't get to see the ones that they're recommending approval. I presume that's the intent.
Yeah, yes, because members of council who may not be on either committee would still, I mean, it still could be something that they could be interested in, that a member of the municipality or a member of staff comes forward with it and says, this is maybe what we want to do and the committee could say no, and that never gets before council. And this way, it also gives members of council to understand. So say for example, that Councilor Parks was on the other committee. And I wasn't, I couldn't actually see what they're working on by the fact that everything that is coming to council and maybe understand from that counselor or from Councilor Townend, from any, from anything from the island on the rationale why they don't believe that that may be a good project. It just, it keeps the balance of council informed on what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further for clarification at this time, Council Porter?
None at this time.
Other members of council, specifically questions of clarification beyond that comments? I've all received. I'll go to Councilor Gordon.
Right, excuse me, Councilor, so I'm just to clear on that. So if a group comes forward with a suggestion or request for funding or whatever, is that simultaneously, they're going to present it to council and the committee at the same time? Or is it going to go to committee first and then they reject it or don't look at it? And that like, it has to be done at the same time, I assume?
I was actually thinking opposite and actually it, it be done separate because an idea may come to the committee. It may not be fully formed with something they're willing to accept, but they might be able to, as the committee, make some adjustments to it to before it comes to council.
So it would go to the committee first, but it would always, always come to council at some point. The committee just wouldn't be able to reject it on their own, is what you're saying.
Well, then all of council would know kind of what is trying with both committees. And yet, like I said, if something does get rejected, there are members of council on both committees that they could relay the rationale on why that, that project isn't fit going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gordon. Other questions or comments for Councilor Biderick, Councilor Parks, go ahead.
Just to touch on, on Councilor Gordon's point there, and, and I think maybe this is where Councilor Biderick's going to, it would almost be every application would be prior, not prioritize, but identified as this would be the top pick, second pick based by the committee. And then even the ones that were denied would still form part of whatever that presentation is to council. Is that sort of what your thoughts are?
Yes, and like I said, it's just to keep everyone in council involved and, and knowing what each committee is working on. And, and like I said, the counselor can give the rationale on to why project A is, is something that they would accept and project B is something that they would not like to go forward currently.
Is that everything, Council Parks? Anyone else? Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. I didn't write the whole thing down, so without it coming back up on the screen, I'm gonna probably miss some of the questions I had, but so point one, in, in your first point, you're restricting, you're setting the limits, definite limits for the life of the project. Am I correct? Or is that the seventy-five percent of it will be, I'm just curious what, how that, how that came about?
Okay, um, two rationales behind it. I didn't know that there could be an extension until speaking with self today. And that could be obviously addressed at the time. But speaking with everyone, and I know that the concerns from, from constituents were that they were looking for the twenty-five percent. Putting a, I guess what you could say cap on it was, I believe the only way I could honestly get people to agree to it or agree to moving forward. Getting enough people on board, I guess you could say.
Okay, my comment now, because we're just in the clarification portion, so. I guess item two depends on if item three goes through, so I've just moved item three. So what, if I understand your clarification for Council Porter, everything that's been done so far is going to be thrown out and it start over again?
Not necessarily.
Policies?
Not necessarily, because each committee could take that and, and, and be a starting off point. Because I do know that a lot of very good work was done by the committee and the staff. It's just each geographical area may have different ideas that seem to come up quite regularly, that's all. Just people have different opinions and, and I believe that this will be an easy way to have some small changes in the nuances of, of the rules, but it definitely be a starting point.
So each area of the municipality would have a different set of rules, so they would have to do an application according to where they're from or where the project is.
Probably be where the project is.
Okay. And you've, if I remember right, there's more people on Ward one committee than on Ward two and three?
No, same. It's just that there would be one council member from Ward one as well as six residents and then two council members as well as five also getting to seven. That, that is all.
Okay, so you're swapping out a member of the public for a count, an additional council member.
And honestly, that's just, and I mean, and why I want everything coming back to council is just so people can have a good understanding of the seven elected officials of what is going on within the municipality. That is all. And, and where projects are going and what people's interests are. Because if, if people aren't involved in it, then you, you might not hear as much and, and get as much back. That's all. For information.
Okay. Number four, I just have a question mark. I can't remember what number four was.
Uh, moving forward, that all the funds granted from the community grant be moved to the appropriate vibrancy fund account. So we hand out different amounts of money to different groups throughout municipality from a community grant and they may be moved to the vibrancy fund. And by moving and, and to add to that on the to item number six, that twenty-five percent be moved to reserves, that those items would never hopefully ever come back to the tax levy. It is a way to save that coming off the tax levy, that these even after the contracts are no longer paying us for a vibrancy fund, that we will have a reserve there to continue these community grant items past the length of the vibrancy contracts.
So the twenty-five percent that you're proposing in reserves is for council's discretion, not for furthering projects within the community?
Uh, no, it still would be for the, the basically the whole committees, just that I liked that idea that came forward from the, the, the current vibrancy committee, that money be put aside for future endeavors. So there is money past the length of these contracts.
Okay, so I misunderstood then when you said that part of the reserve was so that there wouldn't be any capital expense to the taxpayers or upkeep expense to the taxpayers put on the tax roll. What? I, I, I guess I misunderstood. Could you just clarify that?
So for example, by putting money in reserve, by moving the items in point number four from the community grant, which is coming off of the tax levy and going to the vibrancy fund accounts for their geographical areas, that even after the money is used or sorry, the contract is up for both vibrancy committee, or sorry, vibrancy contracts, that there is money in place to keep paying for those items, that they don't move back in twenty-ish years back to the tax levy.
So would be at council's discretion then to keep it off the tax roll?
Yes, simply in a roundabout way, yes.
So it wouldn't be for community projects, it would be for upkeep?
Um, it, it very well could be, yes, depending on how, how much other money gets spent going forward.
Okay, I'm not understanding that. Okay.
If, if I may interject, I might be able to provide some clarity as I understand it and Councilor Biderick, it's your motion. If I'm misunderstanding, please correct me. But I think you're referring to the community grants that are part of our annual budget, where between ten and twenty thousand annually gets handed out to the Lions Clubs for Christmas baskets and items of, of that nature, the, the Garden Club, et cetera. And that Councilor Biderick is suggesting that that pot of funding be removed from the annualized budget, the taxpayer budget, and moved over to the, the levy. It would still be a form of community grant. It would just be community grant funded from the vibrancy as opposed to from the taxpayer. This is different than the community grant section that was written into the draft policy?
Yes, well said. That's, that was my intent. I've never been great with the written word.
Does that help explain?
So there wouldn't, so at that point, the committee would be non-existent, then it would just be a council decision.
Well, there would, there would still be a requirement for a committee because twenty-five percent going forward would still require, there would still be funds over and above. Because hopefully at twenty-five percent, the amount of the, the community grant would be hopefully just the interest accumulated off of that money. And there would be said other monies left in sixteen to twenty years' time.
Okay, I'm confused again now. I thought I had it.
If I may, the twen- the twenty-five percent being dedicated to reserve as is directed through the draft policy would generate approximately two point five million dollars. If we assume two percent interest, whatever that, that rate is, there's about fifty thousand dollars annually in just interest, not touching the, the principal, that would be available for quote unquote, community grants. And what Councilor Biderick is suggesting is that the, the community grants that this council authorizes every year through budget as opposed to the community grants that are referenced in, in the draft policy be taken from those funds and would be available in theory ad infinitum from that reserve. Is that, again, I, I looked to the Councilor Biderick, I'm not necessarily saying that I agree with the policy. I'm just looking to that clarification. Does that make more sense to you now, Deputy Mayor?
So so council would not have any discretionary funds and it would all be done through the committees?
Be done through the vibrancy fund, all such grants would be subject to council approval.
After it went through the committee?
Councilor Biderick?
Am I, am I understanding that correctly then?
Oh, Deputy Mayor, we actually still would have the ability to do that. I was just trying to find a way to ease a marginal amount of money off of the taxpayer levy to move it there because those groups, it is for community vibrancy and the, the, just behind those things are is to make the community better. So I just, A, trying to lighten the load on the tax levy, so there's a possible no, no lighter increases going forward and yet still having that money available for the community in perpetuity because of A, the vibrancy money that's available now and B, by putting money in reserve that the current committee had in their in their plan originally.
Deputies?
Okay, let's move on. Hopefully I'll figure it out. Number seven was all applications would be viewed by council for input, which I kind of figured was already going to happen. Number eight, what was number eight?
Commit, each committee will write their own parameters regarding the rules for applications, but yet so be approved by council.
Okay, so that's where the policy that is in my agenda will be thrown out and started over again.
It will be a starting point for both committees, I, I guess you could say. So there was a lot of, there was a lot of good work done there.
So there would be different, different qualifications for each area then?
There are, there, I believe there are different needs for both areas. I believe that there are different different people, different thoughts, different ideas that would massage things a little bit differently, that's all. And I, I want to give those, those two separate committees the chance to be unique and, and, and have their own identity.
But there would only be one pot of money. It wouldn't be divided up like what this one is. It would all just be one vibrancy fund and the cash flow for capital or say fares or, or anything like that, the limit would still be the same. That would be a requirement of both, both policies then.
Not sure what you mean by that, sir?
Well, in the existing, in, in in the draft policy that's here now, there's two different funds.
Yes.
And you said do away with the one fund and just put it all in one fund. So there wouldn't be a grant fund, there would only be a vibrancy fund. A benefit fund. So that would do away with the things like community services and agricultural arts and culture and stuff?
It would be up to each committee to allocate it as they saw fit.
Okay. And the, the last one, number nine was just so that staff could, if staff had projects that they wanted to see move forward, that this could fund, they would, that would be their opportunity to make an application the same as, as, as a, an organization would.
Yes, and, and, and I mean, an example would be that if there was a project that a staff member has worked on, applied for a grant, didn't get the grants. They shelf the project, three years later, potential grant come up, they try again. This could be something that, I mean, that we couldn't, I guess you say, find the money for without having to raise taxes and we, we, we are usually hamstrung by that year in, year out. But it's something that could better the community, that a, something that a staff member, member has been working on, that could have been directed by council recently or in the, in the near, in the very near past.
So you, you mentioned grants. So, so you, you mean like if we get a grant, but the township has to put in 50% of the funds, that 50% could be applied for?
Through that, 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 yes, but also in the past, for example, if, if a staff member had put forward for a grant from the province or the federal government to try and fund a project and it got shot down. And then that project was put on the shelf because the money wasn't there. This is an opportunity that something like that could come forward, that is all.
At the same limits as what an, an organization would be then? Financial?
It would have to come to, it would have to come to council and it would have to be at their discretion, I guess, through the rules brought forward under each committee, depending on geographical location.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other members for clarification? And anyone? Just so that I'm understanding, I'll ask my question for clarification. The, the initial idea of A guaranteeing the 25% for, for the island residents is, I'm assuming that is specific to the funds coming from the wind electric. I don't have the, the motion in front of me either at the moment. But that would be 25% of the funds coming from the wind electric project would be dedicated to the island. And would be subject to the committee that you're proposing reform of island of people only.
Yes, and, and that is, yes, sir, it's basically 25% of the funds from the wind electric project be allocated to Amherst Island over 20, the 20 years of the vibrancy contract.
Okay, does that? Is that limited by the 25% reserve? And again, I'm going to throw some, some approximate numbers here. If we're talking about $10 million over the life of the contract, we set aside 25% in reserve, that leaves 7, 7.5 million. Are we now looking at 25% of the 7.5 million? Or are we looking at 25% of the 10? Therefore, the remaining portion that doesn't go to reserve is roughly 5 million.
I initially, through you, sir, I initially actually had it of the, of the whole, the whole value of the vibrancy contract. Before any money was taken or reserved, basically the same amount going out of, of that into reserve.
Okay, then thank you. And finally, the the process that has been developed from the by, by the current vibrancy committee, the draft has here, it has a lot of information with regard to direction and usages of such funds. That the, I'll say that the bureaucratic process towards adopting or applying for such funds, et cetera. What you're suggesting is that this be provided as draft to each of two new committees and start that process over to tweak or, or utilize this draft policy. But then to come to their own final draft policy with that new committee. That's, that's what you're suggesting with this, this motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for clarification. Other members of council? And I'll go to the deputy.
Thank you. This is formed in a, in the way of a question. Because I, I am a little, there's, there's a lot of points to this, to this motion and, and I'm not discrediting any of them. But the way I see it is, the first thing that we have to decide is, are we working with this policy or are we working with two separate committees? So the way I see it is really there's, there's two motions on the floor or at, when the time comes, I'm going to request separation, I think. Because we have to know what we're working with before we can set limits on the future. So unless I'm misunderstanding it, I'm the, the main question here, if I, if I'm correct, councillor Budrick is for the beginning is, are we doing away with the policy here and going with, and, and, and go with two separate committees? Which would be rewriting? Or, or bring, coming back with new policies?
So a lot of different things to say that. I I would like to see that policy be a starting point for the two committees. Through reading the numerous emails we received from constituents, mostly from Amherst Island over the past few weeks, since we last had our committee, the whole meeting, I, I read of a lot of people talking about how neighbors couldn't get along, how there was a lot of people that were, you know, very contentious situations amongst people on the island. And by trying to form a committee of islanders with the councillor from the island, I just thought this was a way to try and get people back together, get a common goal that was positive and purposeful to help their community and if, I understand that a lot of work went into the other, the committee and, and the rules that were put forward. From the last meeting we had where there was very little even thoughts of people wanting to come together and try and get something done. That's why I reached out to everybody today and tried to see where they were at, to try and get something done. This could definitely be tweaked. I don't have, and, and I'm always open for, for friendly amendments, anything like that. It's just I didn't want to see this die again tonight. That, that's all. And I'm trying to put forward what I can, I guess you could say.
Thank you. The Deputy Mayor, I will go to councillor Townend next, have his hand up.
I just, I, maybe the, maybe the clerk can answer this question and it piggybacks on, on the deputy mayor's. I mean, really what we're considering is almost a totally separate agenda item that obviously isn't on the agenda. Like, we're not, we're not dealing with a motion that, that, that deals with the, with the policy that's on the table on the agenda. We're dealing with a complete overturn and new direction. And so re- really, that's not what we were here to discuss tonight. I mean, I mean, essentially, we're, we're essentially, as I understand it, trying to in the next hour, negotiate what took the other committee over a year to determine. Which I, I don't know. I, I I'm at a loss as to how, how procedurally really we, we can really address address this without first addressing what's actually on the agenda, which was the policy, the draft policy that we as council requested a, a public committee to return to us. But that's through you, through you to the clerk perhaps, your worship.
And hang, hang on one moment, councillor Townend, councillor Porter, did you say point of order?
I did.
And please go ahead councillor Porter.
There is, there is a motion on the table, a motion that's been accepted and seconded. There is a staff report and with a recommendation, but in no way does that preclude council from doing its own motion and not even looking at a recommendation.
And I thank you for that point of order councillor Porter, but I will go to councillor Townend again. He has a question for the clerk at this point and that is, that is what he's, he's suggesting. Councillor Townend, are you finished with your question or, and then I'll go to the clerk and for your interpretation?
Yeah, so a, a committee of the whole, I mean, you do have an agenda in front of you with the item. The item is the, the vibrancy policy that, that was put forward. As councillor Porter put, I mean, there's a recommendation there, but council has the opportunity at a committee of the whole to have a robust discussion. That's what the committee of the whole is for. If there's additional information that's put before you and you feel that you need more time, you can, you know, again, ask for a report, you can put it to another meeting or you can vote on it, would be my interpretation.
And thank you to the clerk councillor Townend, as I'd answer your question.
I suppose.
Thank you. And again, it is notable that we have a draft policy before us. And the councillor Budrick has done a great deal of work to come up with a, an alternate to that draft policy, but to councillor Townend's point, it is an alternate, most definitely. But that is the role of this committee of the whole to have this discussion. And councillor Budrick, go ahead.
I, I'd just like to speak to that, your honor. As we all know, the last meeting went nowhere and I was just trying to find a bridge. And I mean, if we want to take some time and, and work on that bridge, I'm okay with that too. But I, I talked to everyone and this is basically what it seemed that would be accepted. And I know it, it does fly in the face of the existing committee and the work they did and, and for that I am sorry. But just trying to do what I can.
It's appreciated councillor Budrick. I'll go back to the deputy, you had your hand up again?
Yes. The with, with item one, something just hit me. What's the, I guess what I'm looking for is, is a thought process if this draft policy before us, if it's, if it's put to bed tonight. And we move forward. What was the thought process for wards two and three to be receiving 75% of the wind? Vibrancy money? Plus the full 100% of the solar? When the ward one would only receive 25% of the wind?
Uh, sorry, of the wind, yes. Two points to that. Technically, 25% of both would go to reserve and pay for community grant in perpetuity later, which benefits all three wards. And, and honestly, one of the things that I mentioned from our last meeting was talk to people, talk to people in the community, tell you how they feel. I did a lot of research with a lot of different people within the township. And, and the copy and paste campaign that come in on email. I wanted to find out basically what those thoughts were from, from the concerns of, of the constituents and we got into a situation where last meeting was brought up that funds in, in property tax revenue and, you know, operating costs, they don't meet and whatever. And, and, and I'm not here for that fight. What I, what I will have to say though is that I talked to retire, a couple different retired roads department guys that were Ernest Towne Township before, Loyalist Township after. And they talked about different practices that happened and changes that happened on the island. And they were just bringing up to the standard of practice that the rest municipality already had. And there would be a slight, you know, variation in funds and it has gone on for some, some, sometime 22 years and it will go on in the future. That's fine. I, I just the part of the township having to pay for other areas that, that need to have that done. So everyone lives by the same standard. Comes back around where some of this money can help out those people because their taxes have been going up. And I hear about it all the time. Where, you know, people are paying eight and $10,000 now for a bungalow in Amherstview or a two-story house in Amherstview and they are very upset about it. And like I said, if we can get some funds and like I said, it's wards two and three and it's half of the money to pay for a project or two that wouldn't come off the tax roll that would benefit these people, it would go a long way. And any of this money is making everyone, I believe, at some point, a little happier within the township that they're getting something. I mean, that's a long-winded response, but what I've got.
Thank you councillor Budrick. Other comments, questions? I'll go to councillor Porter.
And so the, the reason I seconded in this motion was there was a couple of things that I did like in it that that you, that you've proposed. One of them is, is giving the autonomy to Amherst Island to decide on their own how the funds are spent. And I think that, that's really important, that, you know, a separate committee of island residents and of the, of the representative of the island gives them their, their autonomy to decide how the money is spent on the island. It also, sticking with the 25%, also stays aligned with what the committee had proposed. And, you know, despite the many discussions about who deserves what, I think that's really irrelevant. And I think at the end of the day, what's important here is that the funds are used in the best way possible for the most meritous applications. And that's the goal, the benefit, the most people possible. But also recognizing that Amherst Island does have the windmills on it. And I think assuring that 25% of those funds goes directly to Amherst Island. And allow, allowing them the decision-making process through their committee and, or at least the recommendation process through the committee gives them the say as to how those funds are spent without outside interference per se of other committee members. So that, that and I agree with Deputy Mayor that a lot of work has been done with this draft policy. But I also think there's some areas in the draft policy that could be improved upon. Like as you mentioned councillor Budrick about an organization having to come up with 50%. I don't think there's some projects where the organization can't come up to, with the 50%. But they're great, great proposals, great projects would, would greatly benefit the community and we shouldn't tie tie our hands to not allowing that type of thing to go forward just because an organization doesn't have the means to raise 50%. So I think that's another really important and valid, invalid point. The 25% reserve, I think that guarantees the The twenty-five percent reserve, um, I think that guarantees the funds stay viable for more than twenty years. And it, it puts the fund into a position of perpetuity. Where after the twenty years, when, when the fund, when the, uh, uh, fund is no longer receiving vibrancy money, um, there is still money there earning interest and guaranteeing that, uh, community projects, community applications to can still be made for hopefully many years after those twenty years. So that, that's why, uh, I second your motion and, uh, and I, I thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Thank you councillor Porter. Other comments or questions at this time? And councillor Parks, go ahead.
Hi, sorry, sorry. Uh, as my fellow councillors know, um, and a lot of the public knows, I've struggled with this twenty-five percent that, um, the island residents have, have deemed that they were entitled to or were due or whatever the wording is that, that has come through in a lot of the emails that have come through in the last little while. And so, you know, I would probably look at supporting this, um, based on some of these other recommendations that are coming through here, but I still am struggling with the twenty-five percent. Uh, but I could probably work with that.
Thank you councillor Parks. Other comments? And deputy, go ahead.
I, I, there's portions of this that are I don't have a concern with. And I guess right off the face, I, I'm into the comments now, not the questions, so, uh, as long as that's acceptable. Well, um, in, in no way am I arguing that the policy that was presented was perfect or you know, the absolute. Um, we were trying to come up with a, with a good, solid, um, starting point to be able to start moving forward on this. Um, uh, following the direction that, that the committee was given and, and off the bat, I'm gonna say again. I, I believe the, uh, residents did a great job, the committee members that were on it did an excellent job. Um, they, they put a lot of energy, a lot of, a lot of thought, a lot of research into it. And the staff that were involved, um, the only word that I can think of for them is, is they were stellar. Um, the they, they, they were the backbone. Um, I may have chaired it, but I wasn't the brains behind it. Um, so that's, that's a given. But moving forward, um, I still believe that, that really there's, there's two discussions here. I hesitate even speaking to the second point because I think the first point is whether we, um, move forward with dissolving the committee and the, the policy or not. Um, so as I said before, I, I'm gonna request, uh, at the appropriate time, I'll request separation on that. Speaking to the rest, if we're going to take it all as one, then I am gonna just make a few brief comments, hoping that it is separated. I do have concerns with segregating the township again. By making two committees to write their own rules for each, for different for ward one from sep- separate from ward two and ward three. I agree a hundred percent, there's different needs, there's different, uh, levels of service. There's a lot of differences. But I still do believe that we're one township and we have to act as one township and work as one township. So to develop, um, to strike two committees to come up with two different policies is gonna increase division instead of unity and, uh, I think we've put too much work into this, now amalgamation was in ninety-eight. Moving forward, there's two hands up, if you wanna take them, go ahead, mayor.
I'll go to councillor Parks.
Thank you, um, I just wanted to actually comment on the deputies.
If it's a comment, then I'll go ahead, I thought it was a point of order.
Oh, no, sorry, no, not less councillor Porter does.
Councillor Porter, was yours a point of order? No, go ahead, deputy.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I have real concerns with it going down that path. Um, if, if, if the draft policy as it's presented is, is, uh, removed and started over, I still believe that there has to be an overarching township policy that both of the committees would be working under. Um, otherwise, it's just gonna be too confusing and too distant. Um, and it's gonna be, by the time we get two totally different policies and applications going in two de- two totally different directions coming to council for final approvals without an overarching policy. I mean, how does council make a decision? Um, so I, I really have concerns with that. Um, and I do have concerns that if we go down the path where there's two separate, uh, committees, um, looking at the different wards that, uh, if we're gonna start dividing up the mons, it funds and saying that a percentage is only allowed to this part and the others goes to another part, then I think we need to take the whole pot and not just one portion. I don't agree with um, ward two and three getting seventy-five percent of the wind plus a hundred percent of the solar. Um, I think that's inequity in itself. And I'll stop there for now.
Yeah, thank you. The hands I've seen in the last few minutes, councillor Parks, councillor Porter, councillor Gordon and councillor Boudrick. I'll go in that order at this time, councillor Parks, go ahead.
Thank you, I just wanted to comment on, on a couple of the, um, statements that the, uh, deputy has made in regards to, uh, segregation of the township. Um, let's be honest, um, that's already happened and by allowing the twenty-five percent um, or the request of the twenty-five percent or the minimum of the twenty-five percent, to me is a segregation from the rest of the township. Um, from talking with residents, uh, most are not for the island receiving that amount of money. Uh, so, uh, that segregation I think is already there, I don't know how we mend that going forward. Um, and, you know, further, the island is four percent of the population of the township and I still believe that allotting anything more than twenty-five percent to the, uh, to the island is a disservice to the rest of the township.
Thank you councillor Parks, councillor Porter, you were next.
Yeah, I, I do wanna speak to, uh, the comment about segregation and, and separation and whatnot. Um, the, this municipality is diverse and we have a lot of diverse areas. We have, as we know, we have agriculture areas, we have urban areas, we have villages, we have with all different, um, needs and all different ways of looking at things. Now, um, that's one of the biggest problems I think we have with our municipality. Is that we wanna paint the whole municipality with one brush. We want to have, we want to have one rule, one bylaw, one, uh, policy, uh, that addresses the entire municipality. It's just not feasible and it's not right. Um, we have to recognize the diversity of our municipality, we have to recognize the distinct needs of every geographic area within our municipality. And it's, it's to me, we need to be moving forward with creating policies that address individual areas, not a paint the whole town with one brush attitude. And I think it's a disservice and I think it's, um, uh, it, it doesn't mean it's segregating, what it means is recognizing, recognizing the needs of each area, recognizing the needs of Amherst Island, giving them the autonomy to do as they, uh, want to do on their island. And, uh, and that's why I think it's really important to, to have that. Um, it shouldn't be the islanders deciding what happens in, in Wilton, it should be the Wilton people. It shouldn't be the Wilton people deciding what happens on Amherst Island, it should be the Amherst Island people. And I think that, uh, that attitude of saying segregation, I think we need to look at it in a different way. We need to look at it in a way of respecting the diversity and respecting the individual and geographic needs of all areas of the municipality.
Thank you councillor Porter, councillor Gordon, you were next.
Um, yeah, I just would want to, uh, speak to, uh, deputy mayor's concerns regards to the two committees. Um, at, at the end of the day, the, as I understand it, the, regardless of which committee, uh, is, at the end of the day, it's gonna come to council. So council will rule on it based on a, a, our mayor, deputy mayor and, and representation from three different wards. So I think, I'm not worried that, um, about the two committees, at the end of the day, the committees don't have to say we do. And, and we're gonna obviously listen to everything that comes forward. I think if I understand councillor Boudrick's, uh, suggestion is that with, with one councillor being from the island and then, uh, six other people from the island, that just probably gives them a better understanding or opportunity to speak, uh, on their own behalf. I mean, who knows the island better than the people that live there? So I, I would support the idea of two committees based on that. I mean, at the end of the day, they still have to come to council. Uh, but, um, I have no problem at all with most, the, the two committees again, because I don't see that, that's gonna be an issue, I'd rather, uh, I grew up in a small town, small community. Um, you have to sort of, you know, walk a mile in the Markson's as they used to say, but I mean, you have to understand what they feel their needs are. So I, I think this is an opportunity for them to have more of a say, uh, to speak on how they wanna, uh, approach their concerns or issues. So I would support that, the two committees, uh, I, I don't feel that would be a disruptive issue, but just a comment.
Thank you. Next up is councillor Boudrick, go ahead and then councillor Townin.
Yeah, just a point to the deputy mayor, um, it, it's technically not twenty-five seventy-five. It's twenty-five fifty, twenty-five for reserve. And that reserve is often the future for, um, for example, like I said, the community grant system where that money is dispersed all over the municipality. And it's just the way to try and keep it off the tax levy and that money is there, uh, that, that was all, it wasn't twenty-five seventy-five, it's, it's set up a little different, twenty-five fifty, twenty-five, that's all, just trying to clarify that phrase.
Thank you councillor Townin, go ahead.
So I, I'm, I'm, th- this is a general question, I guess, to, to colleagues to comment on. I find myself very confused because ostensibly councillor Boudrick's proposal tonight is to try and move council forward from the deadlock that has existed. And the deadlock that has existed is largely due to the twenty-five percent allocation to Amherst Island that was recommended in the committee's recommendations. And that was opposed by some of my colleagues both last year, when it first came to committee of the whole in March. The last time it came to the committee of the whole and it's gone back again. And yet now, it appears that that twenty-five percent allocation is tolerable. So I don't understand why it wasn't, it wasn't tolerable under the proposals that the committee that we established to do the work proposed versus what councillor Boudrick is proposing now. What is it about councillor Boudrick's proposal that is making the twenty-five percent allocation to Amherst Island all of a sudden palpable? Palatable, sorry.
And thank councillor Townin, I'll take that as a question for clarity for councillor Boudrick.
I believe I can, I answer that, uh, councillor Townin. Um, that basically came through, uh, many conversations today, uh, talking to everybody. And, uh, there's a little give and take in those nine different points that everybody talked about. Um, moving up from last committee, the whole meeting where uh, there were councillors that had a one in their number instead of a two or even the twenty-five, that there were things that they felt had, uh, a better reign to be able to buy in. And that's all I was trying to do was basically try and find common ground amongst seven people. And, and these are the points that came forward from that.
Councillor Townin, anything further? Go ahead.
So was, was the sticking point councillor Boudrick in your conversations with other colleagues was the sticking point for the twenty-five percent to cap it at twenty-five percent? Because to be clear, that was not the recommendation of the committee. The recommendation of the committee was to stipulate as a minimum portion for the island, twenty-five percent. But the island in relation to the rest of the entire municipality would continue to have access to the other seventy-five percent. So am I to understand that where you found agreement with colleagues, it was in order to cap the twenty-five percent?
Two-part fold of that, sir, um, for the most part, yes, but for, on the second part, um, there is a reserve fund in there that for will example, still contribute money to the Amherst Island uh, recreation fund like the community grant does going forward when this contract runs out in eighteen years. So yes, there is money still going forward, it still will be in reserve for future councils to talk about, but for in the short term of what the contract is, that's where I could get people on board.
Okay. Looking for other comments? This is discussion within the committee of the whole, deputy mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, maybe I came across with the di- the wrong approach there. I, m- my concern isn't with different committees. So, so that each committee knows their area the best. What I am, what does raise concerns for me is just for each committee to have their own policy and their own process for distributing the funds. And that's where, um, if we wanna have two committees that act in the future distributing the funds or recommending the distribution of funds, that's, you know, that, that's, that's a discussion to be had, that's not a, like, my concern is to start over with the two different committees writing their own separate policies without an overarching township policy that keeps it uniform. Um, that's where my concern is.
And go ahead councillor Boudrick.
I can try and answer that, that, uh, deputy mayor, um, basically, um, the concern being that each area is a little bit different and there could be different financial, uh, minimums, maximums, limits, ideas, um, that would vary between the two on the size of project. Um, with the portion being for, uh, let's call it the mainland of the municipality. Um, it may be smaller just to make sure that it gets spread around more. Like I said, just, uh, trying to get everyone on the same page and a common goal. Um, although I did, I did put in a provision there that both policies from each committee had to be approved by council. So we would have an understanding and input on that.
And and I, I understand and appreciate where councillor Boudrick is going. Uh, I'm going to actually offer some thoughts on what may be compromised and might lead to, uh, potentially an amendment to councillor Boudrick's motion, uh, but, uh, I'd like to put them forward as thoughts. And the first would be that we and hold your hat for a second, that we accept the draft policy at, uh, that is before us right now with the following amendments. Right? The first being that, uh, that the cap of twenty-five percent be set. And the second being that the vibrancy fund policy committee be dissolved. And because we're accepting the policy and that we would then form, I'll call it, I'll call them application committees. And those application committees would be separated, one for the island and one for the rest of the township. Uh, and that they be given a further mandate beyond the application process that to make recommendations to council on further tweaks to the policy. But again, the policy as it stands with structure of the policy of the stands would stand right now. Uh, recognizing the good work that, uh, the vibrancy committee has done. And the, that way we have the interests of the two segregated, separate, uh, diverse, however, whatever term we want to use. But we have the interests of those, uh, groups, uh, supported by the committees uh, that would make the recommendations to council for the actual funds. We would stick to the structure that has been formed roughly right now. Right? Uh, and, uh, yeah, you know, there is a statement in the policy already that says council will review this policy on a regular basis. I would suggest that the, the, the application committees making recommendations to us to make changes to that, uh, to, to the, the, yeah, policy would be quite appropriate. would be quite appropriate and would allow us possibly to move forward in the short term and tweaking to get closer to perfection in the long term. Uh uh I also would support the uh the removal of the fifty fifty percent cap. But I think effectively the line, I think it's uh line four sixteen in the policy that suggests that council has the right to override basically any of the rules within the the policy uh based on the merits of a particular project uh already effectively has that authority. And so I look to council's thoughts on something along those lines. Council, any comment? I'll go to the deputy.
I just have a question because I'm not sure it glitched when you made a statement and I'm not sure.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. Um. The you said, so accept the draft the way it is. And you you mentioned something about the twenty-five percent and and that's when my internet, I think, glitched and I didn't catch the last of the statement.
I I'm suggesting that that we accept the amendment to the draft policy that is the first bullet of councillor Bootrick's which is saying the twenty-five percent cap. Is that clear?
It's clear.
And
It's
I I understand that it may not be well accepted.
Yes, I and I guess I've already spoken to it before, so.
Other comments? If if I suggested with that that we do that policy and keep it at the twenty-five percent without the cap. What would the reaction be? I'll go to councillor Bootrick.
From my conversations today, I believe it would not pass, sir.
And other members of council. I'll go to councillor Porter and then deputy mayor.
So just just to clarify, um what you're suggesting is is uh look at the dra- keep the draft policy as presented with some uh changes.
Yes.
That there would be uh instead of just an open ended twenty-five percent, it would be a cap at twenty-five percent. That the uh fifty percent contribution or the seventy-five thousand per year limit be removed. That the um committee be dissolved, the current committee be dissolved and two application committees be formed to receive and recommend. And um just to, just give me one quick second here, I'm going to look at uh something here. And then the the only major other difference.
I would wi- by the way, I would wish to include the availability for staff to make recommendations for this as well.
Okay, that was the other one and um there there I might be wrong, but I think there was wording in this draft policy that said the committee had to uh approve the applications before they could send it to council for approval. So that would, that also would need to be amended to say that all applications go forward to council with the recommendation, whether it be to approve or decline.
And I would support that.
And uh uh so so really then it were, are we, are we actually saying the same thing then, Mike? What what's your thought on this?
So like I said, my points came from conversations with everyone today. I think if we took the uh took the uh item that was used by, or sorry, the the ideas brought forward by the original committee um with the amendments that are in the bullet points. Um because that is what the feedback I got from everyone today, I'm just trying to bring it up, sorry. That's the feedback I got from everyone today, so that's, it seems that's the direction that that was acceptable to council. Um I mean, I know in that bullet point six is in that and I was very uh important that twenty-five percent was kept for reserve. I know that's in the original, uh you know, I agreed with a lot of things that was in the original document. Um and I mean realistically, if you took the original documents and and I mean, the the mayor already talked about keeping number five, keeping number nine. If we keep number seven, um and uh six is already in there. Um uh I would like to keep four just because that was one that I really liked because it actually took money off the tax levy. Um from the community grants, I would still like that there. And I mean, you would be, the committee itself would be done by accepting that. Um and then as the de- as sorry, as the mayor mentioned, that two separate committees be formed for uh the process or receiving of applications, um I would be fine with that.
Unfortunately, I'm gonna have to to uh interject, I I will suggest that councillor Gordon and councillor Porter, they both had their hands up. But I need, unfortunately, I need to step out for a moment, I will ask the deputy to take the chair for about two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Uh so I councillor Gordon, go ahead.
Um I just wanted to comment on um with regards to the, back to the two committees. Uh to to your point, deputy mayor, I I see no problem with them. Uh both of them working even though they're separate and trying to deal with separate communities, so to speak, in a way, or lifestyles. Um I see no reason why they can't have the same guidelines, uh you know, to work from. Like whether the township sets it that, you know, you must do this, this and this. And then both, I don't see why both committees couldn't work from that. So um to put something into place where, so one committee is uh yeah, well, they're more in line with one another. They're not uh coming to us with a different, completely different set of uh guidelines and rules, if you will. So I have no problem with setting something up that way, so I agree with your point that way. Just wanted to make a comment.
Okay, thank you councillor Gordon. Um any other uh comments or questions? Councillor Parks?
All right, yes, I just got to find it in my emails. So I did have a question in regards to four point one one of the draft policy which uh has to do with uh it states that no grants to be given unless authorized by this policy. Um as council is the ultimate authority for decision-making, that should be removed, in my opinion, because it's not the policy. Um that's that would uh deal with it would be council that would deal with it, so I would like to ask that for it to be removed.
Okay, sorry, could you, which number was that?
Four point one one.
One one, okay, I was in the wrong spot.
So it says no financial donation or grants will be considered unless authorized by this policy.
Okay, and I see the mayor back, are you capable to carry on?
Thank you very much and my apologies for my yeah, my absence. Specifically, I'm apologizing to uh the the members who spoke during that period, I wasn't able to uh be here. Other comments, please? It sounds to me like we are working towards a compromise, where we exactly are with that at this moment, I'm not sure. And we do still do have a motion on the floor, uh councillor Bootrick, go ahead.
So if we were to move forward um and accept the original vibrancy plan, obviously, it's not um it's not exactly uh because it was a large document committed to memory right now. Um because I haven't read it in a couple days. Um and and just as councillor Parks just mentioned, there are are some things in there that maybe need to be tweaked. Maybe if it was, maybe if it was a working document for each committee to possibly um accept, yet look at possible changes. Um because uh every document isn't something that really will hold up. It will stand the time for all time. Um that maybe that it's accepted, but as a working document that um they can come back to council with potential changes.
I had spoken to the idea of a mandate to those uh uh evaluation committees or whatever the company called uh to propose changes to council, yes. Right? Others? Anyone, deputy, go ahead.
So just a question as to it's more of a procedural, I guess. Um we have a motion on the floor and there's been discussion about some changes to it, but there's been no amendment. So the original that motion is still what stands on the floor at this time.
The original motion still stands on the floor. And unless someone wishes to make a a motion for amendment. Councillor Porter, go ahead.
Yeah, I think um I think some of the things that you've said um uh Rick are are quite applicable here. And I think that uh um we're essentially all seeing the same thing in in the nutshell, if you think about the whole picture here. What we're saying is that um if we incorporate some of the points that uh Mike has put forward in his motion, like the cap and the various other things. Um the point that Carol may put forward and um consider it as a working document, consider that we will um you know, dissolve the current committee and um put two new committees in place with the mandate to review applications, but also with the mandate to make recommended changes to the draft policy. Um I so I put that, I put all those that that we have talked about forward as a friendly amendment to councillor Bootrick.
And first off, I'll I'll verify, does the clerk have uh notes on that?
I do your worship and we can go back on the recording to get the full wording.
Thank you. Uh that now I'll go to the mover councillor Bootrick, do you accept tho- that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
And councillor Porter, you were the second on the motion, so I don't have to go to you for that. So we now have the amended motion. And and I'll ask councillor Bootrick to listen and and verify that I'm actually getting it right. That the motion would be to uh receive and accept the draft policy uh with the following amendments. That the uh the twenty-five percent, the number one, that the twenty-five percent uh and only twenty-five percent of the funds uh be allocated to the island through over the twenty years. And that the current vibrancy policy committee be dissolved with thanks to that group for uh for their efforts. And that two new committees be formed, one representing the island, the second representing the rest of the township. Uh to be the evaluators or the receivers of applications. Uh and that that those two groups are further mandated to provide recommendations to council. Not only on the uh the applications, but on the details of the that policy itself. Um uh I believe uh that captures one, two and three. Uh number four, I believe is in the uh, it is still in that we, the funds granted from the the township community grant be moved uh to withdraw funds from the the vibrancy. And the the stipulation, number five, that the stipulation of fifty percent of the of the funding of a project not be a requirement for a particular application. And that twenty, maintain the twenty-five percent uh that's currently in the policy for the reserve fund. Uh that all applications, regardless of the committee's recommendations, come to council. That the committee make their own parameters, no, that number eight is ultimately the one that would be scrapped. And uh but nine, that the staff would have the ability to bring forward recommendations as well, uh would be included.
Also, number five, that the seventy-five for seventy-five thousand per year cap be lifted.
And
That was an amendment that was put in, yes, she put that in there, friendly amendment, that both the fifty percent and seventy-five thousand for for maximum size, yes.
Fair enough. Do we, do we now have clarity on on the motion as it stands now, including that seventy-five percent removal? Right, councillor Parks, are you speaking to the clarity or are you speaking to the motion?
I'm not sure, because you were, when we actually talked about removing four point one from the policy. Four point one one from the policy, so that wasn't included, so.
I I did hear that, right, uh that councillor Porter, were you intending that to be part of your uh friendly amendment?
Yes, I did say that originally and I had just forgotten.
Okay, so councillor Bootrick, you're accepting that as, so four point one one would be removed, that being the uh the the rule that said basically uh no financial donations or grant will be considered unless authorized by this policy.
Yes.
Okay, so does council now have clarity on the motion as it currently stands? Yes, councillor Parks, go ahead. Councillor Parks, we can't hear you.
Sorry, um just wanted to get clarity on one of the comments that you made on point number one. I just want to make sure that it does say twenty-five percent of the wind electric fund. I know that's what it says in in the written motion, but you didn't stipulate that, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
My apologies, uh again, I'm not making this motion, I'm trying to clarify councillor Porter's motion. Councillor Porter, the line one, uh were you including the words wind electric project? In that line, yes. Councillor Bootrick, are you accepting that as the friend? Yes, okay, so that is where we are right now. Again, with all that back and forth, does the clerk have clarity on that? Okay. And so council, I will come back to, I'll start with the mover again, how are we feeling about the the proposal as we, as it sits?
Uh as amended, I am, I am uh uh I am fine with it. Uh like I said, uh it's, it was great to talk to everybody today and get their ideas, but even better now that we're all talking at the same time and and sharing ideas, so it's good and I am good with uh it as it sits.
Thank you. And seconder, did you want to make comment?
Uh no, I'm all good.
Okay, other members of council? I'll go to the deputy.
I I was writing as fast as I could, but I didn't, I missed a couple points, so I just want to make sure that I understand them. So um point number four. How number one was the cap. Two was dissolve the current committee, three was establish the two new committees, which we'll have to come up with a mandate for. And then number four, I missed that one.
Number four is the issue of bringing the annual tax-funded community grant uh a pack, a pot of money, bringing that over to the vibrancy fund. So that we don't have two different community grant funding programs that are very, very similar.
And just one other um point number seven. I I I missed that as well. Number six was a twenty-five percent reserve, number seven.
It is the idea that when the the committees report on the applications, they will report all applications. But make their own comments as far as the recommendations within that, therefore council gets to see all applications.
Okay, so all applications would be would be presented with recommendations.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's my clarification.
Anyone have comments? And councillor Townend, go ahead.
First of all, I I I really appreciate uh councillor Bootrick's efforts and uh and everybody's effort tonight to try and uh try and find a way forward and to uh to be able to understand one another. Um I I wish I could support the motion, but I can't. Um I I think that this sets the timing of the release of these funds back further. Um you know, the project's over, already been over for several years and it's still taken this long. It took a long enough to get a committee struck in A long enough to get a committee struck in the first place, and then for that committee to make recommendations and. Sure, we can say that they'll use the recommendations as a baseline, but there's two new committees with two new sets of recommendations. That are required to come back to council. That puts the the release of these funds back further. Um, coming back to comments that the deputy mayor made, I I. I I find it a little ironic that that I was lectured at the last committee of the whole. That dedicating twenty-five percent to Amherst Island was a means of segregating the township, and yet I find myself in a position. Believing that the 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 motion as it stands would further segregate. Uh, the township, whilst I agree the township is very diverse with diverse needs. Uh, we are one township, and to say that. You know, we we sort of separate our needs into into geographical areas exclusively. Well. We don't do that when it comes to paying taxes. Um, if we if we pay taxes on the basis of the level of service that we get. Depending on those geographical areas, we'd have something to talk about, but that's not the reality, and I wouldn't want that to be the reality anyway. Um, so I I just don't think the two committees, uh, idea is is sound. Uh, and I also think that, you know, we have, we have lots of other committees, um. As a council, and I I think this sets a bad precedent, that we put a committee to work. And basically, when they come back with their final recommendations, we rip them up and and throw them away and decide to do something different. Anyway, I mean, if council wanted to take complete control. Over this process, it could have done that a long time ago, and I I think this is really a disservice to. To the Renewable Energy Vibrancy Committee and the work that they've done, despite platitudes to the contrary, so. I I really, I appreciate the effort, but in 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 my heart, in principle, I'm afraid I just can't support the motion.
Thank you. Other members of council.
Although I would, although I had to completely switch my mindset, and it took me a while. I worked at it until I think I've got where we are now. I, I. I know that there's been some compromise here, um. And I appreciate that. I, and and there's some of the things that are being drawn in, which. I guess. In one way, I I kind of assumed that it would have already, it it was understood, but it wasn't in writing, so bringing it in. That just clarifies, and that's a good thing. Um. I do agree with Counsel Townsend that, um, establishing the two different committees right now. Basically, that states that no funds will be going out this year. It'll be next year at the earliest. Um, so. The, uh, the projects that were hope, people were hoping to get started, um. It'll be at least next year before they get started, which is gonna be a possibly a detriment. I guess, uh. From the applicants to try and, and for lack of a better term, to have any skin in the game, then. It's going to, it opens it up for for more concerns, I think. Um, and that's. So I do have concerns with that. The other thing is, is, um, I have concerns with capping the twenty-five percent. With only, with with Ward one. Being capped to twenty-five percent of wind electric and all of the solar, although the solar is a small amount in comparison. A hundred percent of the solar is gonna stay in Ward two and three, and that doesn't sit well with me.
Thank you, Deputy. Other members of council? And Counsel Budrick, go ahead.
I I understand both Counsel Townen and the deputy's concerns. Um, this has been a while, um, and. Uh, I've only been on council for two and a half years-ish now, almost, um, and. As much as the, uh. Wind electric project was, uh, in its, uh, I guess, production or construction. Um, there was never anything done with, uh, anyone wanting to step up and do anything with the original solar project. And there's five to six years worth of of contributions sitting there, um, and it is unfortunate. I'm, like I said. When I talked to everyone today. I didn't have any pushback and I. In two different directions. One, the original, uh, draft policy, right? In my opinion, excludes the opportunity to do something large, something, uh. Impactful, right? By having a limit of seventy-five thousand dollars times three years possibly, and times two if there's fifty percent funding in it. The original draft policy, uh, that pretty much sets a maximum, uh, possible project at four hundred and fifty thousand, which. I was not happy with. I would have liked to have seen, we we're dealing with an amount somewhere in excess of ten million dollars over twenty years. I would have liked to have seen the Policy Development Committee come back with, uh, an an ability. Uh, to to do larger, more impactful or long-lasting projects. And that being said, they did include, as the deputy mayor was referring to it, uh, line four sixteen. Which says council can override. Ultimately, council is the the authority on this. And has always had the ability to override. That being said, the current. Uh, proposal, the current motion that's on the floor, and setting the the dollar values to say a twenty-five percent cap. To the island, and basically fifty percent or twenty-five percent into reserves. Which there's a little bit of grayness right now as to whether those, some of those twenty-five percent reserves could then be used only. On the, on the mainland, or whether they could also be include using on, uh, on Amherst Island. But the fifty percent of the funds, uh, from wind electric be only for the mainland, uh, projects. I don't like any of that, to be honest, right? I would have liked to, I would have liked to have seen the twenty-five percent dedication to the island. And then, moving past the segregation, the seventy-five percent being. All of Loyalist Township, including the island, and it, all the rest of the applications being based on merit, right? This is not about what I want, though. This is about what, A, the, but we, we mandated a vibrancy committee to go out. And figure out a policy. They did, they brought this back. We have the authority as council to to edit, to override. But I hope we will at least show the respect to the vibrancy committee for the work that they've done. And I believe Counsel Budrick's motion actually does, uh, it makes some tweaks, right? All of that being said, not happy with either situation, right? But, and at this point. Pending further amendments and and further comment from from council. I most want to see this move forward. I'm not worried about the extra six months it's gonna take to form other committees, if if that's what's necessary to make this satisfactory to everyone. Right? The money is still there, it will be used, right? Patience is a virtue, right? Uh, it's it's regrettable that it's going to take that extra time, but it's not a a huge, uh, loss to me and and from that perspective. Right? Ultimately, I want to seek this council, make some decisions. Make a final decision with regard to the policy, so that we can move forward and not have this divisive issue hanging over our heads. And and I will again turn it back to council for comments. If there are any more. If there are no other comments, then I will be in a position of having to call the question. Mover, final comment?
Uh, none, no. Um, the only comment, actually, I just thought of is back to the deputy, um. When he was talking about a fifty percent, uh, uh, community buy, community buy-in on a project. Um, if that fifty percent stays in, it would preclude anything that staff would ever bring forward, because. Um, then they wouldn't, they wouldn't have that fifty percent. That's why I was taking it out. It was part and parcel with 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 that recommendation. Past that, uh, like I said, I thank you all for your time today. Uh, I I I I'm disappointed in, uh, my employer. For paying me today to, uh, spend my day talking to all of you, um, and writing things out, but, uh. It's part of the job, I guess, and hopefully he can, uh, not have to find out, and he's not watching tonight.
With that, and. Uh, is there any request for separation at this time? Then I am in a position to call the question. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise a hand. Opposed? The motion is carried. And, uh, going back to my agenda. And there is nothing further on the agenda. Is there anything else for the good of council? Up to the clerk?
Yeah, so just, uh, in regards to this, is the intent that it will come back, uh, so these changes will be incorporated and come back to a committee meeting? Or, uh, directly to council?
And. That's a good question, right? There, that was not part of the motion at the time, right? As always, all committee of the whole actions are ratified through the next full council meeting, right? Does council wish to push it further by moving this to another committee of the whole? Or dealing with this of the next member, next council?
And on that, your worship, it wouldn't go to the tenth, because we wouldn't have time to get that done. That would be the the following meeting, the twenty-fourth.
Counsel Budrick, comment?
Uh, with with this today, my intent was that it would go to council, actually. My apologies for not expressing that. I I do a terrible job of expressing myself.
That's fine, right? And that's the standard procedure with that, would be that this would go to council. As the clerk has indicated, it would go to council on the twenty-fourth. Unless that's a holiday, whatever the council meeting around that one is, right? There's no further comment, that's the way it will stand. Then that's where we are. And thank you to the clerk. There's nothing else for this count, this committee of the whole. I would seek a motion to adjourn. Counsel Gordon, seconded by Counsel Porter. Any comment? And I'll call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you all, we are adjourned. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.